That's that budget. If it's that, then I would just run it through ours and so we're kind of a pass through for that. And then you guys can designate and super guide us. So, um, as far as I go, um, so what we have right now, I'll kind of just tell you the layout. Um, with Care Connection, we have a six county pool of play, Palau Alto, Winnebago, Word. For three of those counties to do, ah, I'm sorry, um, I'm sorry, Okeechobee, Palau Alto, this play, they have value. And she covers about nine counties, so nothing over the territory for anything in that area. And so looking at that. Um, my, I am all for Ruth's, for the reason of, um, of consistency as well, so adding to the. As far as that goes, would not really cost anything else more for the region, and so it would be cost effective, um, as far as employment goes and things like that, and it would give us decent coverage for those three counties across the board, too. I know Ruth has Hancock as well, and, um, just so you guys are aware, what we do is when she serves Hancock County, then she, all of her narratives, she enters that into the system, and then Jen, our finance gal, runs a report, and then we bill Hancock County for her services. Um, so when she goes there and then we get that revenue back from that, so that kind of adjusts out. So, um, that's kind of how we have it set up right now. Um, so what I, I've said to you guys, um, in the interim is I do have a temporary mental health agreement that you guys can look through, and then I also have the twenty eighty, um, that would be between, um, you know, the region and, and, uh, the entity. So I do have those. Um, I'd have to look back and see because I, I think our twenty eighty agreement, they take, I think our board had to sign it and then it had to go out to your board. I'll have to double check that. So I didn't know if, if anything, we could get the temporary agreement going, um, while the twenty eighty, um, agreement needed to make its rounds to the board so that we could at least get coverage. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions or anything, um, from that point on, but I just kind of wanted to fill you in where, where things were at, um, to, to get this information going. So I, I appreciate everyone, um, meeting together so we can talk through it and get it finalized.
So, really, today, all we need to do is approve the sharing. Ads presented.
Truly, um, I guess my other question would be for Winnebago County, if Winnebago County has visited with Ruth, um, on that, and if that's something, again, that they're willing to do and that Ruth is willing to do, um, so we can start the, the, the process of the paperwork, I guess, next.
Okay, so Winnebago should make the motion first, and then we can make a motion on this side after they do theirs.
Melissa, this is Carla, and I talked to Ruth, and she is fine with it.
Awesome.
Awesome, good.
And is there gonna be any salary adjustments, or that will say the thing? Ruth says that she was fine doing it at the salary that she has had.
Okay, perfect.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, so, is that a motion, Mr. Stecker?
I'll, I'll let Winnebago take the lead on that, if, but, yeah, when it comes back here, I would.
So this, this is a joint motion?
Oh, then, yeah, I would, uh, Stecker here, I would make motion.
Is this a joint action, or is it individual action?
I would think that Cusworth would reimburse us a part of Ruth's salary going forward.
The region, well, I think Melissa explained that, uh, it would go back through, yeah.
Yeah, so it just comes through the region, so I budgeted out because, you know, as far as our dollars goes, it doesn't come county specific. So it would just come out of the regional budget, and so for Cusworth County, Cusworth does not have to budget anything. Um, Winnebago, I, we've run it through the budget line items, like, we set the salary, or you guys started, Winnebago sets the salary, benefits, all of that, and then Carla lets me know, and then I budget it through, and then help you do it because, because of the, the way the law changed last year. Um, we send payments, so we send it, I want to say like every six months, we send a payment to Winnebago County so that they can be payroll because something where they can't have that, that general fund ten anymore. Um, that's how we, so that's how it would be, and then Ruth already has it, anytime that she has mileage or like business cards or anything like that, she will, they invoice us directly and we pay that directly out, so. Sounds good.
Is that a second to the motion?
Yeah, so, I was thinking the same to you, where is this a, a, a joint motion, or do we each have to make a separate?
I think we can do a joint motion, motion, being as we're doing a joint thing, so I, I think it's fine for, uh, Bill.
All right, well, then I'll make a motion to enter into a, an agreement with Cusworth County for advocate services.
Okay, I would second Stecker.
Mr. Stecker seconds the motion?
We'll, the second Stecker to enter into an agreement with Cusworth County for advocate services, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They're all ayes on his side, Bill.
Well, as much as I wanted to vote against it, I did too, I voted for it.
Do you guys have full board? Present?
Anything else, anything else we need to discuss?
I think they do.
They did, I s- I heard them on, uh, there's nothing we need to do, how about you?
I don't think so.
Thanks, thanks, Melissa.
Carla, do you have that agreement, or the twenty eighty agreement?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll send them again, I sent them back in October, I'll resend them again, I'll, let me look over them one more time just to make sure. Um, I sent them a couple of months ago, so let me look over them, I'll resend them and just make sure, so we'll get that in motion, um, here soon. I'll, I'll look them over and I'll get them resents so that we can get the paperwork completed.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, and when you get the twenty eighty agreement, we'll put it on the agenda and, and okay it. Thank you, guys.
I do have, I do have one other question before we hang up, that's not necessarily on this, but, um, can I ask it really quick?
Sure.
Um, my question is, so, um, Care Connection actually has our, um, governing board meeting this afternoon, and so this is more for Bill and Carter. Um, I know that, um, we have a couple of other individuals that cannot be there today. Um, I know Bill, you can't be there, Carter, I know you mentioned your budget meeting. Uh, we have to get our claims and one other thing approved, if there's any, would you be able to sneak out of that meeting and come into Care Connection so that we can get our claims and a few things passed today?
Gee, uh, Melissa, we, we, we actually are not having budget meetings now today, um, so I would potentially.
Health insurance, that one?
Health insurance.
Oh, we saw, that would be a big one.
But that's, but we have no budget.
That's what?
I think, I would need probably, I mean, I could make it work into, if you could make it work, I, I basically just need some, I have, um, I, I, I won't have four, so I'm at three right now, four, and we, we need to be able to, two motions passed. My budget, I think I might wait because I don't have enough people, and I'd rather wait till.
Can I join electronically?
I, I would work around here, I'd be able to run claims and one other thing through.
He can.
Can I, I'll, I'll join electronically.
That would be perfect, electronically would be perfect.
Could you send me the link for that?
Yes.
Have a, a time that you're gonna do it, I mean, I, 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 I can interrupt what I'm doing, too, I suppose.
Bill, I would hate, I would hate to do that, um, you have been a court meeting, but, um, either way, I'm thinking, I could make it work like one forty-five, I mean, if anything.
Let's, let's, yeah, let's shoot for one forty-five.
Well, if you.
Yep.
If you don't, if you don't have a quorum for those two, uh, call me.
Okay, I will call you, so, and then. Okay, I'll plan on, uh, Carter, if that works too, I'll plan on like one forty-five, we'll try to get those two holdings right around that point in time.
That will work.
To come on and, oh.
Yes, that will work.
What was that? Okay, perfect, thank you, sorry to interrupt your meetings and ask, but I figured I had you guys, so I, I'd ask real quick while I had you all there.
No, no worries, thank you.
Perfect, thank you all very much, I'll get those out with you guys soon, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Yeah.
Have a good one.
Bye.
We good here, after? Okay.
So what do you guys want to do next?
We've got three minutes before public hearing on sixty, so probably should do that. And there's a bunch of people out in the hallway.
There is?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, get them to come in, I didn't know anybody here, I was kind of waiting.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got a bunch of people just standing over to this one, I think.
This is sub one, but. So it's same, same district number, different subdistricts.
He's just trying to confuse you with numbers, that's why I care, that's all he can do. He thinks, he thinks it's cute because we got all these green numbers and.
Yeah, to kind of keep on top of them, there's a lot of them.
It is ten o'clock, and we have Bolton and Mink here for sixty sub four. It is a public hearing, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by Lacter. All those in favor? We gotta do a roll call, don't we? Yeah, do the roll call.
Matt?
Yes.
Lacter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Strips?
Yes. Take her away.
All right, I'll give, uh, Marjorie a little bit of time to get set up here, um, but, good morning, all, I'm Tyler Conley, professional engineer with Bolton Mink. Be going over the report for the proposed facility improvements for Drainage District number sixty sub four. For a little bit of context, up on the map here, I've displayed all of, this is the original plat of all of Drainage District number sixty. The portion sub four that we are looking at, that this report is pertinent to, is the sub four portion, which is this system down here, roughly outlined by this dotted line. So, that, uh, that's how it fits into all of sixty, but we are just talking about the main tile and how it interacts with that portion, sub four, of Drainage District number sixty. As a more close-up map, this is then sub four as originally modeled or drawn in green, and as our computer models show it in red. The dashed black line is the current assessment schedule, or the parcels that are deemed to be receiving benefit from the main tile of sub four. Starting here where it enters into the blue open ditch and ending all the way up on the very upstream side of the district. This report is, was filed with the board and is the hearing now in response to a petition that was filed last year for the investigation of facility improvements. Little bit of backstory on the district, district is located generally north of Sway City. It, the sub-district consists of a main tile, seven lateral tiles, and four sub-lateral networks. The district was established in nineteen, or, was petitioned for in nineteen eleven. Work was completed then in nineteen thirteen. There was various work throughout the years, cleanouts in the forties and the sixties. In nineteen sixty-five, there was actually, uh, a petition that was very, very similar to the one that we received and, uh, have written this report on for a investigation of facility improvements that at the time were, uh, deemed too expensive. Then there have been, uh, odds and ends repairs from the nineteen seventies all the way up to, to present. There was a field review of the open ditch of the system, the first mile of the open ditch system, as well as the main tile from which the capacity of the system could be determined. The main open ditch of the system does drain to the jurisdictional ditch number seven in Minnesota, uh, making its way to the Blue Rose River and then, uh, eventually the Minnesota River. The capacity of the district, which is analyzed in a drainage coefficient, which is, um, the drainage coefficient is the amount of water that can be drained from a landscape in a twenty-four hour period of time. The, uh, so that is to say, if a half inch drainage, if a system had a half inch drainage coefficient, that means that a half inch of water could re- remove from the whole watershed in twenty-four hours' time. Uh, any other corresponding drainage, just, uh, drainage capacity is, of course, that, uh, amount of water in inches. The standard nowadays, or not the standard, but the recommended, considered appropriate drainage coefficient for a system, uh, as recommended by Iowa State University, is a half inch drainage coefficient. The existing capacity of the district was bound to be at or below zero point one five inches per day, or approximately thirty percent of the recommended capacity. That's not unusual, the original design capacity of a lot of these districts was, uh, what they were aiming for was between an eighth inch and a quarter inch, uh, capacity. Of course, that has, uh, has now increased. The capacity of the system on any drainage bed system like this one is determined by, uh, three things, the pipe size, the pipe material, and the grade of the pipe. Those are the three things that can control how much water that pipe moves under, under gravity. Uh, as some of you, I'm sure, remember, there was an informational meeting held on this district last year where we met and discussed some of these options. At that informational meeting, it was, though no formal action could be made, the suggestion was that the system be reviewed for a half inch, three-quarter inch, and one inch system. This report does provide those numbers, we'll get into that a little bit more, um, but from my review of it, my base recommendation is that the half inch and three-quarter inch are much more attainable than the one inch system would be. Now, with that being said, the system with those, those three, the size, the material, and the grade, that's all assuming perfect conditions. That's all assuming, uh, no additional friction losses based on the material age, the gaps, the disjointment. So, that is to say, the calculated for both the original system and the designed systems, those are ideals. The system is likely operating, just based on its age, over a hundred years old, likely, uh, operating less than its original design capacity, something just to, to keep in mind. The petition was for an improvement, has been, has been stated, which is a little different, has some nuances that repair options do not have. Repairs under the Iowa code are, for drainage districts, are required. The capacity of the system must be maintained to hit what is generalized as its original design capacity. The system can't operate less than that, it's the duty of the trustees to keep it that way. Improvements are different, improvements are, one, they must be petitioned for by the landowners, the, the board as trustees cannot enact them. Uh, but they also have some other stipulations that follow them, which are outlined in the report, but I'll go through them here as well. One is that in, uh, the event that an improvement project moves forward, the NRCS will most likely consider any upstream wetlands to have been converted. This would mean that mitigation would be required, typically at a minimum of a acre-to-acre replacement rates uh, for the same functionality of the converted wetland. That can be expensive, credits are, currently, at the time of writing this report, credits were fifteen thousand dollars an acre from mitigation banks that would serve as that wetland mitigation. As of, again, the writing of this report, we, after the informational meeting, we sends out wetland determination letters to landowners requesting that they get certified wetland determination, uh, results from the FSA and the NRCS office. We are not, me as the engineer, or the trustees, the district itself, are not able to get that information, it falls on the landowners, it's, it's their, they are by law the only ones that are allowed to go in and request and obtain that information. That request was made in the hopes that if any wetlands did exist, and the landowners wanted assistance from the district in mitigating a wetland that was convert, uh, that was converted, that was not i- in their favor, that assistance could be provided, that has happened in, in other counties and other projects, uh, and it's something that can certainly be discussed, but it's not something that we would just know offhand. The wetland determinations that we have received are shown here in green, and in none of those determinations was it determined that there was any farmed wetlands, or wetlands, or anything that would be, uh, at risk of being converted under an improvement project. So that's a good, that's a good sign for, for those that we got back, uh, in here, in favor of the improvement. The second important difference between repairs and improvements is that improvements can be stopped by the owners of the district under a process known as remonstrance. Remonstrance is if fifty, over fifty percent of the landowners by count owning seventy percent of the land by area object to the project, it stops where it is. That's, that's the end of it. Uh, the objections are taken, uh, at or before the time of hearing, so anything, uh, filed today would count until the board closes their, this portion of the hearing. Uh, if it's continued, obviously you have the chance to object until that hearing is closed. Uh, it does have to be in writing, it does not have to be anything more than, uh, I object and you remain. We've actually received two objection letters already, uh, that have been added to the calculation of what the remonstrance requirements would be, and I will read those after I've finished through the, uh, reports, so they are entered into the minutes. That is remonstrance. The third thing that is different from a repair to an improvement is that the code considers that under an improvement, the benefits will have been changed significantly enough that it warrants a reclassification of the benefits of the district. Now, what that means is that the old schedule that was used for the construction and the maintenance throughout the years would no longer be valid. It would require a new classification schedule be created for the new project that was built. Reclassification takes into account the benefits that you receive. The code does not specify how that is to be done, uh, whether it be mathematical, or, um, a hundred years ago, these classification schedules were made likely on horseback by men that went out and just surveyed the area, looked at wetness and, and the different conditions and assigned benefits. The code doesn't specify what factors or how that is to be done, only that it be fair and equitable. The modern process, all engineers do it a, do reclassification a little differently, but all the ones I've ever worked with or for have now a system of mathematical factors that go into the reclassification of a district. Those five main factors that we use are area, how much of the parcel, how much within that red line does a parcel benefit? Uh, so it's only that that's in the watershed that benefits. The proximity, how close to the facility improvement are you? Uh, you benefit more by being close, you don't have to use other tiles to get there, you don't have to use other facilities to get there. Uh, next is use, how much of the facility do you use? Those at the bottom end use less of the total system than those at the very upper end, who send water through the whole system. Wetness, what is the need for drainage? That's based off of the USGS soil surveys maps for the, um, essentially the hydraulic conductivity, the moisture amount per your soils. And lastly, for a factor of land use, what is the land being used for? Everything's compared to agricultural land, agricultural land gets a factor of one, because those factors are all multiplied together. And ag land, then with a one, that doesn't change anything. However, properties that shed water more quickly, uh, your roads, I don't, there's not a railroad in this one, thankfully, um, those get a little complicated, but, uh, your roads, gravel, hard surface, uh, any industrial, commercial buildings that shed water faster than agricultural land get assessed a higher percentage of benefit. Uh, that is important to note as well, that all of the, uh, owners, even the, the road right of way, secondary roads department, uh, any county ground, uh, all of that's all considered an owner and a beneficiary to these systems, so they're all assessed in time. Uh, additionally, here in the improvement section, the one similarity between repairs and improvements is that any road crossings, the construction amount for those crossings is the responsibility of the entity that owns that road right of way. So whether that's the secondary roads or the, uh, Iowa DOT, um, they are responsible for those. Construction costs. In the event of construction, landowners would be entitled to damage that they sustain on their property, whether that be actual crop that's run down and lost. Uh additionally, we factor in in the areas immediately above any sort of tile work that there is soil mixing and compaction that typically takes it takes time to get that ground back into full productivity. And it's estimated that in that amount of time, one additional crop yield is lost through that process. That's all things that would be covered at the completion of the work and is surveyed and documented at that time. For the three options outlined in the report, the half inch, the three quarter inch, and the one inch drainage coefficient, cost estimates were developed for those three options and are attached at the end of the report to them here for a display. These are including the non-construction costs, uh any engineering, the financing, the notices that all went out. The things it does not include are the uh road crossings that have been outlined in the cost estimates. So for the half inch drainage coefficient, that is the estimated total assessable cost there of uh three million seven hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars over the, for an average per acre cost of fourteen sixty-six. Now that cost per acre is is just for an example. The, because of how benefit shakes out on those mathematical formulas, the odds that any particular parcel pays exactly that cost per acre is very small. Uh it it's not just assessed over a, a per acre basis. It's also important to note that we have displayed the cost over ten years and the cost over twenty years. On drainage district projects, landowners have the uh right to pay over a set uh number of years that's determined by the board supervisors as trustees. And that number can be no more than twenty years and no fewer than ten years. On something of this magnitude, it would be my recommendation that the twenty year option be uh considered if this does move forward. That does not by any means uh say that you have to wait that long or uh be held in at the the interest rate that the county is at. Are you, is it still at five?
We haven't decided on this project.
Well, right, okay, right.
Yeah, we'll have to decide the interest rate.
Right, okay, perfect.
The standard right now across the county is still at five.
Is still, okay, the standard was still at five, okay.
Yep.
But we're gonna have to look at the interest rates going up.
Yeah, right, yeah, it's, it, yeah, that's, we're at an interesting time.
Yeah, it's likely it might get raised.
Okay. A good thing to consider.
Will it go down in the future?
No.
If it trades up and back down?
No, those warrants, they stay for the duration of.
Yeah, reopen it, renegotiate, come in with another one?
Nope.
Reason?
Cause we don't want all those warrants out there forever and ever and ever.
That's, that's not an option to renegotiate.
The uh, the way those, the way those work is that because the district is not, by law, it's not allowed to carry uh a large balance of money in any funds. Uh so that, that is to say that the the district only ever brings in money when it needs money to go, to go out. Uh now the code understands that landowners don't, aren't likely to just have that amount of money sitting around, so they give them the option to defer it uh with the county writing up the uh, what, the warrants, what are known as warrants, to uh pay for the work that's, that's done. Uh me, for instance, I've paid in, in warrants. Um those.
You are not paid in warrants, your company is.
Well, right, yeah, the, the, right, yeah, Bolden make is paid, uh for the work I do, Bolden make is paid in in warrants.
Yes.
Um and so then those uh carry the, the interest because the cash isn't being, you, the people that get those warrants may have to wait those twenty years to to see that money come back to them. So it's an incentive to accept those. Uh however, it's also an incentive that if landowners can go out and get financed at a lower interest rate and make those payments back to the county sooner. Um that is not a financial consultant in any way, but that is one of the incentives of that higher fixed rate. The county, the county doesn't wanna be used as a bank if they don't have to be.
The other thing is if your interest rate's too low on the warrant, you're not gonna get anybody to bid the project. I mean contractors look at the interest rate that is on the warrant when they do the project. And if there's too low a number on it, they're not gonna bid the project because they don't want the warrants.
Because they, they have to turn around and and find ways to pay for the the pipe. The, the pipe manufacturers aren't likely to accept something that isn't an actual uh catch, e- essentially.
Yeah, and and the contractors, they they spin the warrants off to banks. They don't hold them all the time, so.
Right, there's, there's a very big economy that goes on behind all of that, but that's the reason why it's all uh set and locked in place. So that's the option for the uh half inch drainage coefficient. The three quarter inch was uh four point four million for an average per acre cost of seventeen fifty, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per acre. And then the one inch drainage coefficient, and this is reflective of the larger tile size that would be required to obtain that one inch drainage coefficient was five point two million for an average per acre of two thousand seventy dollars per acre. Those are the cost estimates on that. Now in order as it's displayed in the report, the next section is the farm program compliance. This has to do, uh this is why it's important to know if any wetlands are to be converted on any properties as it is the landowner's responsibility. The district is not liable for the penalties that can occur from a converted wetland being farmed without mitigation. As I stated, that's likely. It it's calculated on a functionality basis, but it's almost always, uh what, the minimum would be an acre per acre replacement of any lost wetland. Spoke on that, help with mitigation. Um Clean Law, the Clean Water Act, uh the Waters of the United States Rule, that is back up again. Uh the, at December, I believe December thirtieth of last year, the EPA released their new definition of what the Waters of the US was going to consider in a very boiled down sense. The, what was going to be considered jurisdictional wetlands was anything that was uh hydraulically connected uh by sub, by shallow subsurface conveyance, which would mean that from the old rule of being tangential or uh immediately adjacent to, now any wetlands that are, as I stated, shallow, shallow hydraulic conveyance would be considered jurisdictional. This uh would increase, likely increase, the number of jurisdictional wetlands that the Army Corps of Engineers had authority over. That rule, even the old one, had had a injunction on it since twenty fifteen. And when the rules, these new rules come into effect March twentieth of this year, it's very likely, I've, I've actually even seen reports of it, that states are already planning to sue over the new, the new rule. However, the outcome of that would have impacts on projects similar to this. And it would require uh not only the wetland or the landlord's participation on wetland mitigation, but the districts as well. It would require joint applications through the Iowa DNR and the uh US Army Corps of Engineers. So we're, we're kind of in a little bit of waiting as far as that's concerned until March twentieth. However, it does look rather promising, so to say, that a number of states, Iowa included, would uh sue similar to they did in twenty fifteen and put another hold on those rule changes, but I can't say that for certain. The report also contains in it a section on water quality that I encourage everyone to take a look at. The district is not made to by any code section, uh participated in any water quality. Um but they, there's nothing that says that they can't be supportive of the landowners taking that initiative as well. There are programs out there, a lot of funding available um for any interest. It's just uh to date, there hasn't been a real great avenue forward for districts to participate in water quality. As I spoke on with improvement projects, they require reclassification and it's oftentimes more equitable or it's more uh efficient to do annexation at that time. At this time, there's only really the one large section of the district that's outside of the district boundary, and that is this area right up here. It was originally drawn as having been in, but it is not within the dotted black border, so it is not considered part of sub-four. And as far as I can tell from the history, the district records, this is the, back to the original map of sixty. That area is located right here. And while it is undoubtedly part of sixty, it does not appear on any that I can find, any of the sub-districts. So it's, while, while the original engineers uh agreed that it was most certainly in the watershed, they couldn't quite determine where that land fit into the sub-districts.
It's not being assessed right now into anything other than sixty?
Anything other, not that I can find, no. That is a bit of importance because as the right of remonstrance is considered, the code reads that it's land to be benefited that is currently in the district. And while it is in, while that land, anything that's outside of that is in the district of sixty, so to say, it is not within sub-four.
So at the present time, they cannot do remonstrance on those acres?
They, they could not object and have those acres be counted, correct? And the calculation that I've put together for it takes that into account. There, it's, it's only those that are in the dashed boundary and the acres that they benefit from that that is being calculated. In conclusion, looking at the district, the tile sizes that would likely be uh, or that that have been calculated to be needed for the half inch and the three quarter inch drainage coefficient. The largest size on the half inch drainage coefficient being a fifty-four inch at the downstream, very downstream end, and on the three quarter inch being a sixty inch, my recommendation for consideration is the half inch and three quarter inch drainage coefficient. The one inch, in my opinion, uh needing, requiring to go to a seventy-two inch pipe is not feasible.
All your engineering studies so far is all cement, no plastic, correct?
That is typically my recommendation.
Make it clear to the public that this is.
Yes, yes, that, that's, uh all of the cost estimates have been done on concrete. Uh it's been my experience in the past, especially with larger tile sizes, that the, the strength comparison i- is just not there. With, with anything of this size, uh I I almost always consider concrete. Uh and as far as price comparisons, I I've bid the the gray plastic together with concrete with the amount of rock that's needed, it's oftentimes pretty equal on price. Uh I've never seen a price on black plastic this big. Uh and and honestly, it wouldn't be my recommendation to, to go this big with that, with that size of black plastic.
We haven't, we haven't done anything that big, but I think we, on seventy-five, was it twenty-four inch and smaller, did plastic?
We did plastic. We also had issues with it.
Well, we've got, we've got one project that's completed with plastic and one that's in the works with plastic, but there has been a cost difference between the pla- the black plastic with rock versus concrete.
And and I, that I don't doubt. Um that you can get for a little bit cheaper. Uh there, there are certainly some areas in this district that while we can pick up some grade and some depth, there are still areas that would be shallow. Still within the two and a half, three foot
Three foot.
of cover.
Okay.
Uh it's all, it's all possible. It's just my my, my gut feeling on it is that we would be better off. Gut feeling and experience is that the concrete option holds up better in these installations. With that, I can read into the record the objections.
Before you start, is there anybody here that would like to write an objection? We'll give you a piece of paper and a pen. If you think it's too high priced, now's the time to put in a written objection. We'll give you a piece of paper and a pen if you think it's too high priced, now's the time to put in a written objection before we.
What's that?
I have one more.
Oh, you have one more, okay, perfect.
Anybody else got an objection to the project?
And just to reiterate, the objections would need to be turned in before the close of the hearing for them to be counted.
Right, so now's the time to do it.
If if you wish, yes.
So we have a a written objection here regarding the proposed repairs and improvements to drainage system sixty sub four, Kasuth County, Iowa. The undersigned Amanda Rutter and Lori A. Link. Landowners and persons interested in the hearing on the proposed repairs and improvements drainage district number sixty sub four, Kasuth County, Iowa. Hereby file filed the following written objection to the notice of hearing on the proposed repairs and improvements for the drainage district number sixty sub four, Kasuth County, Iowa. One, the undersigned are the owners of the following described real estate located in Kasuth County, Iowa. Which real estate is or may be affected by the proposed repairs and improvements to drainage system sixty sub four, Kasuth County, Iowa. To wit, the east half of the northeast quarter of section thirty township one hundred north range twenty nine west. Of the fifth prime meridian Kasuth County, Iowa, except the parcel of land located in the northeast quarter of section thirty township one hundred north range twenty nine west. Of the fifth prime meridian Kasuth County, Iowa, more particularly described as follows. Commencing in the east quarter corner of said section thirty. Then's north zero degrees, zero minutes east. Five hundred ninety seven point three feet to the point of beginning. Then continuing north zero degrees, zero minutes east two hundred seventeen feet. Say three hundred seventeen point eight feet then south eighty seven degrees thirty minutes west five hundred twenty feet. Then south zero degrees eight minutes west two hundred ninety six feet. Then south eighty nine degrees thirty minutes east five hundred twenty feet to the point of beginning here in the real estate. Two, the undersigned objects to the engineering report to the feasibility of the proposed repairs and improvements. To drainage district number sixty sub four on the grounds of cost of the proposed repairs and improvements to drainage district sixty sub four. Outweigh the benefits of the proposed repairs and improvements to drainage district number sixty sub four. Three, the undersigned further object to the engineer's report on the proposed repairs and improvements to drainage district number sixty sub four. And to the feasibility of such proposed repairs and improvements on the grounds that the proposed assessment against the real estate is disproportionate. To any benefit which will be received from the proposed repairs and improvements to drainage district number sixty sub four. Four, the undersigned further object to the engineer's report on the proposed repairs and improvements to drainage system number sixty sub four. And the feasibility of the proposed repair and improvement to drainage number sixty sub four on the grounds this isn't an interview. This is and that this is not an appropriate time to proceed with the proposed repairs and improvements. To drainage district number sixty sub four. Wherefore, the undersigned landowners and persons interested in drainage system sixty sub four. File these written objections to the notice of hearing on proposed repairs and improvements to drainage district number sixty sub four, Kasuth County, Iowa. Day this twentieth day of February twenty twenty three, Amanda Rutter and Lori A. Link. Next, attention Board of Supervisors of Kasuth County. I would like to express my disapproval of the improvement plans for drainage sixty sub four of Kasuth County for the following reasons. One, the proposed improvement goes through the southeast corner. An eighty acre parcel of mine and this is from uh Mark Reynolds. Corner of eighty acre parcel of mine just before entering the open ditch. The improvement will not improve anything on my land as all my private tile are connected to the other county tile running to the northwest from the open ditch. As a side note, improving this particular tile would probably help my. As a side note, improving this particular tile would probably help my drainage. Two, the existing tile does drain where it runs across my land, but a couple thousand feet of private tile would do the same thing. Three, finally, the cost will never show any return on my land. The only thing that would improve my drainage is to improve the county tile that runs to the northwest from the open ditch number sixty. Or me putting in more private tile to improve my particular tile. I doubt there is any plan on proving that line, but even if I elect to put in more private tile on my own, it would be beneficial to me. And a lot less expensive. I have no objection to the work being done, but I believe the cost should go to those who benefit. Also, when farms are purchased, the drainage, soil types and many other factors go into the purchasing price. It should not be purchased at a lower price because of a drainage issue and then expect others to help improve the land. Case in point, a few years ago, when land around here was be bringing about nine thousand an acre. Piece of land by me sold for six thousand dollars per acre. This land had and still has drainage problems and everyone knows it. So far, the purchaser has not expected the rest of us to help pay for improvements on this parcel to bring this value up to that of well-drained land. In short, this improvement is not will not benefit the drainage on my land, sincerely, Mark Reynolds. The last one, Board of Supervisors, Kasuth County, Iowa. I am objecting to the preliminary information that I have received in regards to the report of the proposed new tile for drain. Drainage district sixty sub four. I have received no information as to possible cost for the farm that I own. I cannot understand how you can go forward with this project without giving more information than you have. I am not in favor of the project and I have no intention of doing pattern tiling, which is one of the main reasons this is being done. At the same time, I received information about doing some water retention work on the wet spot on our farm. I am more in favor of that than this plan. Richard E. Johnson, Family Trust.
Have you added the acres up yet?
I I need to add the one that Marge just got to me. Just make sure I'm getting the right ones.
So everybody understand the wetland provision you go through with this and you have wetlands that are not deemed previously.
Prior converted.
Prior converted?
Yep.
You will be. Have to buy acres to make up for every acre that you have that's not been converted. It's very expensive. So if you do not know your determination, it would be prudent for you to all get your determination of wetlands.
Yeah, and Tyler hit that.
Yeah, I know, but it. Yeah.
You have a question? Nobody mentioned what is the return on that? You got estimates for that?
Yeah, what is the return quantum?
Which I indicated in the letter. So that would be some benefit to somebody to somebody. If we proceed with this.
I don't have the return on investments because that. I know what the design system will remove as far as water. What the landowners do with that particular benefit? I assume when we do the the classification of benefits is that that's fully utilized. And that it's the pattern filing is done uh and that the that increased drainage coefficient. Is appropriately harnessed. If it's not, the return on investment could vary wildly. And for that reason, that is why we don't or at least I don't provide any sort of. Return on investment amount, that's that's something that the that the landowners will have to. To figure out.
Tyler, you want to touch on a minute, this tile is not going to take in any water.
Right, it it's.
Where the old tile might, so don't don't be angry if we put a new tile in and it doesn't take any water in. Because they're not designed to take water in.
The job of this tile is not is not to drain, it's to convey. It's to take the systems that are additionally put in that do draw and move the water away.
All all your current tile that's in the field right now that's connected to the old system would be reconnected to the new system. So your your current private infrastructure outside of that would be reconnected to the new one. So it like Tyler said, it's a transportation mechanism, it's not a collection system.
This this provides an outlet to those that otherwise would be. Too far away from the from the ditch, uh that's what the old thing was doing, what this.
So how come they're not paying for it?
Yeah.
On mine, it's not going to do a thing for me.
They are, so that's that's part of the classification of.
I still have to pay seventy five thousand dollars and I could do the same thing with.
But but not.
Now you don't you don't know if it's seventy five thousand.
But not everyone, not every.
Oh yeah, he is.
Oh, that that is. And have or you're you're you've got to figure it out.
Do you want to know average prices are going up now and you're gonna have corn going out?
That.
That's the old schedule, it'll be revised.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't.
I was very dirty.
The the schedule that was printed off, that's the that's the old schedule. That's that old dotted line on the map that was shown. Uh on a project of this size, this magnitude. The the Iowa code chapter four sixty eight uh is very clear that those old schedules do not hold any longer. It's based off of the new benefits received from the new system. So to to run that amount on that schedule will not get you what you would. I mean unless by just happenstance, the benefits came out the same. Um but the the methodology for how those benefits were created and the methodology now. In districts like this, I've seen it's it's they're very different. The benefits of old put a lot of a lot more weight on wetness. They put a lot more weight on the proximity and the downstream owners. That old schedule uh it is also it's just for the main tile. Any of the additional laterals, anything like that, everybody's paying now on that that old schedule. But once this if if a large enough improvement project goes through, any improvement project goes through. The code requires the redistribution of benefits. That then in our in my methodology, that then takes into account. Not only how close you are, not only how wet you are, not only your area, but also how much of the facility you use. If you're up here and you use all of the system.
Tyler, Tyler, we got other another question here, you're looking for a printout of this map.
Yeah, we we can't read that from here.
I mean, I have my phone close to my camera.
That that's not that's not, there's nothing on there about the damage.
No, it's it's just showing the the district, I I could get.
Well, seriously, I can't read this from.
I can see green and red lines.
Yeah.
I see that with my input prescriptions.
Um.
The report is on the.
Yeah, the report has been available on the website, um I don't know if you have that specific map, but you have one with all the layers.
Not everything is. I'm worried you're gonna have a need map. I would like to.
If you would want, there you are.
Thank you.
Okay, cause yeah, for for the sake of order, multiple conversations do not work.
So how can I be against it, agree or for it?
When you really don't know what your cost is gonna be, that's.
It sounds like you haven't decided today.
That's well, and that's. That's unfortunately part of the it that's that's a sticking point in the process because it is. You're you're I I say here's your average cost per acre. Um it could be more, it could be less just based on where you are. The code and the the system for reporting on this does not have a great provision for. How to determine those costs beforehand unless there's nothing in the code that says that a. Pre-classification of the district can't be done. Those are are sometimes considered, it it's something that I would do only if I were directed to do it. Uh what that does is it it does the reclassification process without some of the. For instance, it doesn't use the commissioners, uh an actual reclassification requires that disinterested two disinterested landowners that live in the county. That don't have anything to do with this district. Go through and see if the process is fair and equitable and a pre-classification that isn't done. Uh it's it's just more or less raw numbers. That can be done and parts of that can be used. If and when the classification actually goes through. But there's no guarantee that through the final design process and through construction that all your numbers will stay exactly the same.
So the figures on that piece of paper we were adding with half inch. Is not the figures that that's.
That's it, that is an estimate, that is purely that is that is purely numbers that from similar projects and similar tile sizes. I have compiled, those are not this this would if it's approved. Would uh go to final design, final plan specifications, and then we go out to bid. We get actual numbers back from from contractors, that would be the essentially the the price, that's the price. This is just something to to go off of as the estimate for now. So back to a pre-classification could be done. And and there's different instances and there's different uh recommendations for and against it. And. Yeah, so there's there's different there's different pros and cons to it. But you are right, right now. The the best I have to offer is off my estimate what the uh. Average cost per acre is and from experience, those down on this end would pay could pay. Uh half or less than that cost per acre and those up at the upper end that use more of it could see. Uh two two and a half times that, three times, just based off of benefit.
Seems to me it would be awfully stupid for anybody to approve this and not go ahead first.
Very good.
I don't get buying a new car or. So after the groceries break, I wanna know what you're spending.
Don't you wanna know in your crop insurance what you're spending when you get your crop insurance, my husband's crop insured, he goes with that all day long, what's that, what are you gonna get for money?
Yeah, I I.
Corn farmers are calling our house constantly, I want my money, why?
I don't necessarily disagree with you, um and and to be clear, I don't. I don't, the these are all decisions that the landowners have to make, there there are not any decisions. Uh ult- well, it's ultimately decisions that the trustees of the district will have to make with input from the landowners. I don't have the authority to do anything other than what I'm directed to do, one of which was to prepare and present on this report. And ultimately, what the district ends up deciding that they want to do, uh I'm here to help and to see it through to that. I'm not here advocating for really any of the systems more so than the others, it's it's not my ground, it's not my money. I I take it very serious, I take the the responsibility of putting this together very seriously because it's not my money. So it's I'm not asking of the district or of the trustees to do anything outside of their abilities or their comfort zones. Or what they are told back from their their landowners. And I I the more input and the more we can all be on relatively the same page here, the better. So all that sort of input is 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 very valuable and and it's things that the trustees will need to consider. Again, the decision doesn't the decision needs to be made by the close of the hearing, that doesn't have to be today. Again, the decision doesn't, the decision needs to be made by the close of the hearing, that doesn't have to be today. This can be continued um with or without giving a date, there's different instances, there's different protocols for that. Um but no, by by no means does it have to be decided today. And and by no means are we at a point where something additional or more information can be relied. I think I had a question here and then I'll I'll get to that.
So you you made the comment that on the end of the that, there would be, you you said even two and a half to three times potentially, is that ever?
Poten- is there's potential for it, it all just depends, without looking at what the those factors all are playing together, I don't know.
I would, but I mean, it's it's possible.
If it's, I've seen it, that that's, it's something that has happened.
So it's possible that on the end of that, you could be at thirty-five hundred dollars an acre assess.
It's or more, it's yeah, it's possible.
And and that's where it goes back to the the discussion in the letter about six thousand dollar an acre ground. Those those factors of wetness and the use of the facility come into play in those regards.
Sure.
Wouldn't it be, but wouldn't it be best to go and figure out what that would be for each farm before we?
That that's something, that's something that could that could be done, I mean it.
I mean, you gotta pay ten dollars an acre, Mark, yeah, I'll pay that. But somebody else might be eight thousand dollars an acre. I mean, I change your mind on it.
What's that? I can look exactly.
Kinda tell them about what it's cost to.
I think it's.
Tyler Tyler, what would your thoughts on doing a preclassification? Um after this hearing, but before the bid letting, that way we could plug numbers from the bid letting in and have actual numbers instead of engineer's estimates. Cause I that in in the end, that's what's gonna be more valuable to you guys, you can you can look at an engineer's estimate all day long. But if you don't have a solid price from a contractor, it it's gonna change anyway.
I mean, you Tyler, you presented the half inch coefficient, is your discussion of the three quarter, or is that not part of this?
That that's all, that's all up for, that's all up for debate, um.
But but I didn't see the cost for three quarters, I guess.
Oh, oh yeah, he he went through it, it was it was quick, but he did go over that, um but you can go back to it, you got chance.
Yeah.
That's half.
That's half.
Reclassification would run here about eleven to twelve dollars.
You know.
So it's about four point four.
I'd from Tyler, you wanna speak to cost on reclassification or pre-class?
Yeah, it.
Well, he's got thirty thousand dollars in it for reclassification, you divide that by twenty-five hundred thirty-seven, it's eleven eighty-two acres.
Now, that would be, that would be, that would be for all of the acres over the whole, because that'd be for all of the schedules. Your your pre- preclassification wouldn't talk to that.
Yeah.
Um because it would just be looking at the main, it wouldn't be meetings with the commissioners, I wouldn't be making all of the hard schedules and maps and everything like that. Um.
I'm just gonna say the last one, run it in range of fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like just just I have fifty percent probably.
That's, that's pretty close, yeah, you'd you'd be looking at eh four or five dollars on the curves.
Size, size of.
To to look at it, to to know what your cost was for that. Um the the big, the big argument betw- between it, the the pros and cons. Is the big pro, you're gonna know better than just ballpark what your figures inevitably are going to look like. Um the con is that uh you're you're spending money on a uh preclassification that may be useful, may not be useful, you may utilize, you may not, uh it it takes time. Uh but if you're, but.
But you don't have to do that anyhow?
What's that?
You have to do that anyhow.
Well, we would, but it'd be.
Only only if you proceed with an improvement project, if nothing happens here, a a reclassification is not necessary. So that's where it kinda ties together with the conversation of what action do you want going forward.
But it's still useful for any future repairs.
No, it's not. No, 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 it's it's not.
No, it's not.
Well.
Reclassification would be.
No, but the pre-classification isn't used.
No, I said reclassification.
No, pre- pre isn't.
But but we won't, we won't be.
No, pre- pre is.
But it but I mean, you you are right to a certain extent, Jack, though, if you did, even if you did do the improvement, but you did go to the work of doing the preclassification, you could just see it through to the end and have the new schedules, have everything broken off.
That's the point.
Right, it it's not.
Reclassification would be used for any future repairs.
Right, there there is, there's a lot of paths forward.
But we we won't be doing a a preclassification is different from a reclassification.
Kyle, I was saying that that you could take, even if you didn't use, even if you didn't go forward, you could take what you had on a on a pre-class and see it through to reclassification, there's nothing that would say.
But you'd have different tile sizes, you have different factors.
You'd you'd have different tile sizes, but that'd be, that that would be relatively easily.
Yeah, but it's kind of a wa- it's kind of a waste of money, in my opinion.
Eh 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 yeah, I mean, it would, it it would be in some argue, yeah, there's there's nothing in any of this, I'm sad to say, that is really a silver bullet for the whole, for the whole system. Uh that that being the whole drainage district system, it kind of chases its tail in a lot of ways. Um.
There wasn't enough do- do a remonstrance.
No, no, on from the objections that we have received. The results are, the total number of landowners by count was forty-five, of which there are six objecting. The total number you would need for a remonstrance by count is twenty-three. The total acres, and this, the the number I gave Jack was off of the original, what was calculated from the model, the acres were two thousand three hundred forty-nine and a third, seventy percent of that is one thousand six hundred forty-four point five three. The um that that's the amount you would need for a remonstrance, the total objecting acres right now is three hundred seventy-nine point nine or sixteen point one seven percent of the total land benefiting, objecting.
So right, right now, where where is the reclass, where how is it reclassed right now, so if there's a repair done, is everybody paying on?
Yes.
Or was there one done?
There there's not been a.
Any work done, everybody pays for it.
Correct, on the main laterals, anything.
Uh just question, when you mentioned repairs, but you know, a piece of equipment breaks down, we buy parts, we fix a piece of equipment, we just don't go buy a new one. What has, and I'm coming in a little behind the scene here on the receiver, I'm gonna look, in case you just want to let her. What, where do the problems exist, how much of the line is a problem? Is it, if five hundred feet fixed ninety percent of the problem, what do we know about that?
Tyler, I would say the petition would be something to highlight for that.
Yeah, that's the, now, I don't know, to answer your question exactly, I don't know what the condition of that line is, we didn't, we didn't televise it, um. I've been.
The condition is it's too small.
That's that's where I was, that's where I was gonna go with this, is that even if we went and repaired broken sections, sections that are collapsing, showing their age are finished. Uh which is again, a requirement of the code, that has to be done in instances where the tile is failing. It will never work any better than it was originally designed for, which is at that zero point one five percent drainage coefficient.
Probably the tile that's in there currently.
The tile that is in there currently is. I don't want to misquote this. For my capacity, this is.
While while Tyler's looking that up, I'll highlight that in the petition, there's eleven signatures and the petition requests investigation into an improvement for the main tile system, so that's that's the basis of the direction the engineers were given.
The downstream segment of twenty-eight hundred feet of tile is thirty inch. And it's at zero point zero eight percent. Great. With a drainage coefficient of the area that it's serving of zero point one zero nine inches per day. So a little over, little over a tenth of an inch in twenty-four hours period time.
Seems like thirty inches, you get more, rid of more water than that, I worry all of period time.
It's too flat.
It it would if it weren't at such a flat, if it wasn't such a flat grade.
Well, flat grade and the amount of acres.
And the area, the area that it serves, yeah.
Yeah, a massive amount of acres that are dumping into that, so.
A thirty inch only goes south part of them.
Twenty-eight hundred feet, then it becomes a twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-two, it steps all the way down to a ten at the very upstream end.
Does anyone have input to share as far as the size you'd be interested in, we have three options in the report? Half inch, three quarter, and one inch, Tyler discussed his recommendations earlier, being half or three quarter. Do we have feedback from landowners in that regard?
And while they think on that, you would ask the question, Kyle, about if we could take this with a pre-class, so the actual, get actual bids on it. Um that, we're entering into, in my opinion, a gray area for what the code allows and.
I don't think we can, for basic reason, you're gonna get bids on a pre.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get bids on something that hasn't yet been approved.
Right, been bid and approved, and then you go back and get bids, they're gonna have to go, the contractor's gonna go from the pre, he's gonna give his recommendation to all the other contractors that didn't bid it.
So that that's not how I had it envisioned mentally, it would be making a decision today to move forward in a certain capacity, but doing the preclassification at the same time, so that when we get hard numbers at the bid letting, everyone would be able to be informed of that upfront versus after the project is built.
But you're never gonna get an accurate number unless you actually have a contractor bid it.
Uh well, yeah, so the, so you you would do, you would make a decision today on whatever path forward. Then we would, in in, as I was thinking this through, then you would move forward with a preclassification in conjunction with that, so when the bids come in, you plug those into your spreadsheet and get actual figures for each landowner, and then when the decision is made, everyone would know before the shovel hits the ground, rather than after the project is completed, so it.
Our contractor's able to give, give, give you a accurate figure on a pre.
That's, that's, I I don't know, cause it would. Well, you're already past the point of, you know, you're already past your point of acceptance.
You would, you would be past the point of remonstrance, but you would get information to the landowners to plan farther ahead.
You would, you'd be getting, they'd be getting numbers before construction rather than after, but it wouldn't really be changing.
It wouldn't change the impact of things, but it would change their information level.
What it is.
We've done in the past when we did uh uh pre-classifications.
Right, and we didn't get a contractor to do it.
Right, yeah, that's, and that's, that's, it wouldn't be my recommendation to go about it that way.
I I got a question, you guys farm the land, is there, you are, you guys losing a lot of acres, is there a lot of ponding? And that, what do you see, when, I mean, do you lose a lot of acres?
Like on, like on mine, I don't lose anything to get back, I lose because of the other guy wandering the back of that. If I draw a line, then you don't lose anything.
Well, let me talk here, because I've got probably three hundred and what, forty acres involved in this one, each of the land belongs to my wife and me. Where's the bar into the tile, so you're talking three thousand, two thousand an acre, it's gonna be six hundred thousand, right?
Good. Yeah, yeah, that's, you're you're.
And I'm for it, okay, do it, three quarters of an inch, you just heard from me, I'll fight the bullet, get the kick in the ass, I'll never live long enough to see a return on my investment. My son will, my other three kids will, down the road, twenty years from now, six hundred thousand dollars, what? A new tractor, I don't know.
And and you, you're saying that because of the issues you're having with drainage?
Because of the issues I'm having with drainage, I bought it for, while I'm sixty-eight years old, I just completed my fiftieth harvest. I know what it's like, I will pay my share, I will benefit more from it and I will pay more from it. I will never live long enough to see a return on my investment, but if I don't do it, like in nineteen sixty-five, it should've been done, shouldn't it? Hey, what would that have cost today? Nothing, probably twenty thousand instead of six hundred thousand, well, that's my opinion of it. He's the next probably biggest landowner on your family list, you can ask him his opinion, I don't know, he wants my opinion.
What's that?
Thank.
Would be four and a three quarters.
Thank you guys for sharing your opinion, anyone else?
A lot of the names that are done with that, gone to bid letting, and and sometimes the bids come in at twenty or thirty percent less than what the engineer's estimate is.
You you need three quarters.
And usually I'd like to see a worth of least a bid letting, because then you know what what it's gonna cost. Uh and you and you still don't have to accept the.
We can have the contractors bid a half and three quarters and accept which one you want at the time we award the contract.
Yeah.
So it hasn't have them bid us before you really approved it?
So we we have to approve a direction, but we can allow half or three quarter to be bid. And we can, we can build that flexibility into the bid letting, and then we can make a decision when we have hard numbers, which is what Roger was just saying, and I would.
But we'll do one or the other, we will not do nothing, you will accept the half or three quarters.
Uh un- unless, of course, the numbers are way out of line, you can't, the.
The only, the the reason that the bid letting to not do it is economic feasibility.
Right.
It's at the board's discretion at that point to reject them based on, based on an absurdity. Prices come in twice what we expected, the board at that point can reject all the bids based on feasibility. Uh however, we would be past the, in my opinion, we're past the remonstrance rights, where objections are tallied.
Yep.
But we can bid the the two options, the two alternates, it's nothing to to have that, we've already got it down on the plans for feasibility. So to just run that through with contractors is really not, they just need to get prices on a couple more pipe sizes and that's really nothing to.
So if you did a pre-classification, would you, that money that was spent then would be, you, if you did a full classification, you would take that into consideration? It wouldn't cost you more. How would you bill for a pre going to a full classification?
It, in most scenarios, you're right, there is no additional change, there's no, uh the only reason I I say that there's never anything like that is because the pre-classification, until this goes to to final design, and really until it's in the ground, I don't know exactly what's, what is gonna go into it. Um so a lot of the modeling is all the same, a lot of the, a lot of like your soil witnesses, all of that stuff doesn't, doesn't change, it's already set what it is. But what the final product you get from construction, that can can tweak numbers uh in some instances more than others. Uh some, so that's, it's 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 not like you're, I would say, uh in every case, ninety percent of your pre-classification is good, valid, usable. It's just that little bit of room I gotta leave myself on the end, in case something real, something unforeseen happens.
Is there anybody that really wants a pre-classification? It's money that you're gonna spend, I'm not gonna see you get any return on it.
How long would it take to do a pre-classification versus moving forward today, are we talking six months to here, I mean?
No, no, it's.
Everything goes, everything goes up and price interest goes up.
That that's, that's the. That, that's, that's the, that, that's the big discussion is, is the couple of months it takes me to go out and get, because I gotta, I would have to figure out, um, all, all culver locations, make sure I'm happy with where the, where the tile's gonna be, um, actually get all of the, the wetness data, do all of that, it, it just, it all takes time, um, on the, on the order of a couple of months, uh, whereas if it, if you don't think that the results of the pre-classification are going to change your opinion on whether or not to do the project significantly enough that you would object, that time could be spent getting it to bid and, and actually getting you numbers.
What your construction timeline on is if this was approved, approved soon?
Uh, hopefully get something, uh, not, not hopefully, the plan would be to get this bid as soon as possible, because like you say, numbers, they fluctuate up and down, but they never seem to go all the way back down. Get it bid by late spring, early summer, uh, depending on weather and, and, uh, how much we wanna, i- if we could wait until crops are out to start and save ourselves a year of crop damages, or if we get through early enough that it still makes sense, we could get, in my opinion, we could get some work done on this this year.
How long do you think it takes to do it all? For that, if you.
Uh, one, I would say one full construction cycle?
I would, yeah, I mean, I would say all of the full year, maybe a year and a half.
Uh, yeah, of course. Um, I know, I know contractors, a lot of them asking, looking for work. Um, excuse me, where does a full construction cycle end? Oh, sorry, sorry, um, uh, a construction year, so, uh, essentially your spring, when, when frost is out, all the way through till, uh, lockout again, taken out your late Decembers, Januaries, Februaries.
Is, is there anyone that really wants half inch instead of three-quarter? Okay.
We'll have them in both.
So, so if, if we get information for both, that would be a good idea, probably.
So you're new, consider the half, three-quarters versus the amount of land that's being assessed? In other words, if you own more land and that guy wants the three-quarter versus cost, I mean.
So the, the, the process is somewhat driven by the petition, and, um, the feedback from landowners obviously is something we should be taking into account, so.
So you, you weigh it based upon the landowner's amount of land?
We take everything into consideration.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's not, there's not a defined answer to that, but.
I just wanted to weigh did it all based upon, how much each person's input is due of us based upon amount of land and cost save, we're gonna incur.
Is there any other questions? I, I guess my only question is, is, is there anybody that wants to take more time to get their determination on wetlands?
I'm, I'm concerned about the people that didn't come to this meeting today. Are they just annoying us because they don't think it's anything big deal, or?
Would we?
That's, that's, that's kind of always a concern with these meetings, but the legal process and the code that we have to follow doesn't, I mean, it's, it's a landowner's responsibility to be informed and show up, and we, we just have to provide the, um, avenue for the conversation.
Well, I guess for me, I represent two, three, four of the people on my list, myself, so I'm concerned that my wife and me are here, so, so to speak. And my brother and sister, I have a little tiny bit of it, and they're not here, so.
I guess, it would be the same, same ballpark with family.
Unless there's anything else that's pertinent to this, I think we're gonna close the public hearing.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Kyle, do I have a second? Second by Flack, any discussion on the motion? Seeing, non-dual roll call vote please.
Flack, Nath, Whacker, Sucker, Jerk.
Yes. Now we're up to the decision. And one more time, I'll ask people, if there's anybody that wants more time to get a wetland determination, now's the time to speak up, or we're not gonna take it into account.
Let it go.
I guess typically, I mean, what I, what I've seen happen, we do the pre-class and then get, go to a bid letting. I can't hear you. Do a pre-class and go to a bid letting and see what the bids come in. That's, that doesn't mean we're gonna do the project, but you would have to pay for the cost of the pre-class, you know, regardless whether it's done on the current assessment or with all the new, when the new one comes out, but, uh, sometimes bids come in twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent under what the engineer's estimate is.
Is there anybody that wants to do a pre, pre-class?
And, and that's thirty thousand dollars approximately?
Probably, probably fifteen, ballpark.
And it's completely wasted work.
Right.
No, ninety, ninety percent would be usable.
Maybe, maybe.
If, and that's, that's conditional on doing the project, if, if.
If the project didn't go through, then I would suggest that you go ahead and finish the class and do a full reclassification at the eleven or twelve dollars an acre, because that could be, that would be used for any future repairs. Instead of you paying for all repairs, no matter where they happen, then you just pay for the ones that you're very about it, that you're.
But really, our, our decision today is whether or not to go forward with the project. It's not, it's not just to go to a bid letting, it's to proceed, um.
No, it's just to go to a bid letting, it's, it's nothing more, it's just to, whether or not you wanna do a pre-class and go to a bid letting.
Well, I'm just gonna ask, anybody wanna do a reclassification on the district? If not, we're gonna go forward, just one, or?
There's a couple back there, two.
Do you understand that's gonna be twelve dollars an acre?
Do you have a question, or?
About the wetlands part?
Okay.
I got one spot, I don't know for sure.
Okay, have you requested a determination yet?
No, I didn't know anything about it yet.
Okay, put that at the top of your priority list.
Go right down to the FSA office and, yeah, that's my.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that could, that can take some time to get that done.
Yeah.
Anything else before we make a decision?
So you're, the trustees are thinking of reclass then, versus a reclass to have, is doing the whole reclass?
So you got one, same reclass.
It's gonna benefit you.
It won't benefit you if it costs more to do the reclassification and the, and down the road, that's
extra costs of the construction are delayed and increased, and the interest rates go up.
Yeah, I, I guess the feeling I'm, I'm hearing is to skip the reclass in general, until.
I'd want more people wanting the reclass before I'd spend the money on the district.
Yeah.
You're talking preliminary, preliminary.
No, even a reclass, totally.
If.
Reclass is up to trustees.
Right, if we go through with the improvement.
It's required.
It's required, I don't wanna do one ahead of time.
Right, yes.
I agree with that.
So do I have a motion to go ahead?
Tyler, do you have an order of steps, you, or action, because we have interest rate, timeframe on warrants, um, do you have a, a schedule for that?
Uh, all of that, I've seen, you could, you could do now, but I, I've seen it maybe more commonly done when the plans are filed.
Right.
Um, if the improvement recommendation was adopted and I was directed towards the.
To proceed with bid.
Plans, plans and specifications on the half inch and the three-quarter inch, that would, in my opinion, suffice for the discussion that's been had.
Oh, we could do that at, at bid letting.
Right, yes, yeah, that, that is a time, well, you, you'd wanna have the interest rate before you went to bid, so that the contractors knew what the.
What they were, what they were.
What the warrants they were likely to receive would have.
Yeah.
So that's why I say when I, when I filed those plans and specifications, to go out for bid.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that timeline, I just wanted to clarify what you were looking for today.
Okay.
Um, in, in regards to the bid letting, um, and the two options that we are looking at, I guess for the numbers we've, we've looked at in the engineer's report for the half and three-quarter inch, I think we should have this project broken out and split up in half, because that is a massive project for this area. Um, do you? Well, yeah, do you want direction for that, or how would you like to handle the bid?
Whatever, whatever alternates or divisions that the trustees would like to see this bid in, I would like that direction.
You have a motion?
So I, I would make a motion to, um, proceed with the project, or approve, approve the engineer's report and getting, um, going to, going to bid letting with half inch and three-quarter inch options, and dividing the project in half for alternates.
So your motion is to improve, approve of the engineer's report and go to a half and three-quarter inch coefficient on the project?
For, for the bid letting, yeah.
For the bid letting. Do I have a second to that motion?
Yeah, for, for all the warrants, because, I mean, the, the half inch coefficient is, what, three point seven million dollars?
Yeah.
That's, that's a substantial project for this area, I mean.
So why you're cutting it?
So that you have the ability to get more competitive bids from other contractors, because not everyone's gonna be able to do a four million dollar job.
You just see, you, you just get a, get both fish, you get a half and a three-quarter coefficient bid, that's all you need.
I'm, I, I don't suggest doing eight and a half, because the contractor that gets the bid can sub it out, that's his prerogative.
You just do, you just have a bid of a half and three-quarter, that's the way we've always done it, that's how, that's how you do it.
I, I would, as a, as a, my opinion, I, I wouldn't be in favor of the half. I, I mean, I see the potential benefit of it, but as far as like a, a staging and having to have the lower done before the upper, it, it, I think it's more trouble than it, more potential trouble than it is, than it is worth. And I think the contractor's more, more likely to give you his better number on the whole thing than he is going to be to, to try to get half of it. My, my opinion.
So will you amend your motion to have it, just to do the, accept the, uh, report and go half and three-quarter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got that now?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a second to Kyle's motion?
I'll second.
Flack makes a second, any more discussion? Do you need a date in the motion?
Uh, no.
No, because they, you would put plans together and come in to the board for that.
Come back when they're finished.
You know, okay, that's all I just.
No, I, I don't, I, I would prefer you didn't. Because whether or not that's too quick or too late, I just.
Okay. So I have a motion on the floor to do an improvement on this district, any more discussion? Hearing non-dual roll call vote.
Yes, there's no.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Motion carried. Get your wetland determinations.
Yeah, thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Yes, I will get, I will get the final, yes, I will get that final design to you before I get it up here for.
Thank you.
Yes, that would get. On something of this magnitude, crossing that many times, I, I would dream of not.
So Mike's did on, uh, PK one. That's different, okay. PK one is, which is PK one?
Are you still on to play on the Nazi game?
Uh, I, I mean, I head, I come to the office.
This is a joint.
No, right, right, yeah.
Um, request a private tile.
But it's in the.
That's my extension of that one, I can tell you that.
Next thing I'm on, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I remember it, no.
I, I didn't bring up since you're here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Because the government and environmentalists and all that, they're gonna wanna look up the things that they don't understand.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you. Kyle asked, there's a, there was a, just a, I gave Mike a, uh, opinion on the private tiling for PAC one. I was on the, if you wanted me to just stick around and explain what my.
I just said three please.
What my opinion of that was. Yeah, I don't, I don't remember exactly what I said, but I.
You just said it wouldn't be that big of an impact.
I don't think there's any impact at all.
He, no, I mean, and I don't, it's, it, it, I, we can't keep him from, he, he's a benefiting participant of the ditch, so.
We should wait for rest of board to get back to that conversation, but yeah.
No, I didn't see any conflict at all. But just my opinion, though.
I think that will, man, I, I, you don't always know the, the context of those situations, you know, to put it as politely as I, as I can, but.
We got a meeting at noon, I'm trying to get everything done, so.
Well, I, I don't think I, I don't think, I don't think I can stick around.
If we can get everyone back here in a few minutes, it might be good, but.
No, I don't think you need to take off, because we're gonna, we're gonna do it in a hurry.
I did, I ran things and I told them there's an estimate.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, that's not, I don't, I don't, that's not, that's it. Thanks all.
See ya.
So, where are the other ones going now?
I assume the bathroom.
Carter just ran to the restroom, and I just left Jack run out of yours.
This way, heard monkeys.
Monkeys?
Heard cats.
Monkeys.
I like monkeys better.
Yeah.
Monkeys can be entertaining.
Why don't we just get this done, so we got a meeting at noon.
Yeah.
That's on a hard, I mean, it's a hard start, so. Anybody have any questions on PK one, uh, main tile repair that we have with Palo Alto County?
So when I, when I looked at that with Marge, um.
The claim?
Yeah.
Oh, you wanna do the claim first?
Right.
No, the, in the order. Do the request. The, the.
The tiling request before that on your other page probably.
Oh, on the other page.
At the bottom, there you go, that one.
There we got one. Do you wanna bring everybody up to speed, Marge?
Okay, um, the, a, a landowner who's actually in Drain seventy-nine previously was annexed into the open ditch of Pak one and um is using to do a direct outlet to the open ditch at a closer location, but the impact is not gonna be that much. On the district, it was just a question whether or not it needs to be approved by the board or.
I think it should be approved by the board and I will make a motion to approve, do I have a second? Second by Flah, any more discussion?
I, I would agree with that it should be approved by the board, but I think for consistency sake, I don't know how we can just allow that to cross over, because it is on the schedule, but it, it would be changing where that water would enter the open ditch of PAC one, which would change its benefit, so.
How, would you change the benefit by adding water one place or another into PAC one open ditch?
You would have, this, that amount of water from that eighty acre field would enter the ditch, like, I think when I looked at it before, I think it was like six miles earlier, so.
Yeah.
It enters the facility earlier, which means it uses more of the open ditch and less of the tile system, which are factors in the reclassification. I don't know how much that would affect it, but it would affect, in my opinion, it would affect what that, that land pays for the open ditch based on the usage, so. I feel that should be addressed. I don't have an issue with them tiling in or any of that, but I, the, the benefits um should be addressed, because they are any other time, we do a voluntary annexation.
But he's already paying benefit to go into that ditch.
But he's not paying benefit for that specific purpose.
It's a private tile, isn't it?
It's a private tile.
It does, because he's paying, he's paying a fee for the open ditch based off of the district that he's in as an outlet fee.
He's still paying the same outlet fee going into that same ditch. You can do a study and you might change it by ten cents an acre and it's not worth the study.
The use, usage is based on, on the county tile.
No, it's, it's, it's for all the facilities, it's the ditch and tile.
Do you want to argue with everything today?
No, I'm stating my point, it's.
No, you're arguing with everything. So.
Well, that's your opinion, but.
No, that is the fact. It's immaterial where you dump it into the open ditch.
That's not what I've been told from engineers to do the reclassification, that's one of the factors, so. It's not immaterial and it's one of the criteria.
Anybody else have any discussion on the motion?
I, Carter wouldn't have a clue.
I don't even know what we're discussing.
So, we're on, we're on.
The, the tiling, private tiling from section sixteen to section seventeen in the um Pak one open ditch.
PAC one, okay.
Yeah, PAC one private tile.
Yeah.
There's information in there.
Who is?
So the landowner currently.
Let me get on the right page here, yeah.
Yeah, the landowner currently is on the schedule for the Pak one.
Is this Andy?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, okay. And then he is wanting to do what?
He's doing private tile into the open ditch.
Okay.
And he's on the schedule, but basically for an outlet fee farther down, but his impact on the open ditch is minimal, but it could, it could be at a earlier case in the open ditch, but the cost to do a a, a reclassification or adjustment to the classification would be more than what the actual change in the schedule would be.
Okay, so, so if he does it, if he goes ahead and does this.
He pays, he pays all of it.
Correct, correct, okay, okay.
He, he would, yeah, he would do all the private tile.
Okay, so what, what is the issue then?
Whether it needs to be approved by the board or not to do this.
Okay.
And, and how it goes about, when we.
I, I know the farm that he bought there, yeah.
When we typically do things crossing branch district lines, there is a um voluntary annexation process. They hire an engineer and handle the change in classification, so their benefits are changed.
He is entering a new drainage district.
He is already annexed in with the project that was done before, so he's, all the acres are already in the benefit for Pak one.
They're, they're in the open ditch schedule, but those, those acres go into that um sub-district one of nine and they fol- follow down that tile.
But he's putting private tile through the sub-district, he's not using the sub-district.
Oh, I, I, okay, I see.
So there's, so there's two sides of the adjustment that I would recommend, because he shouldn't be paying for a tile system that he's not benefiting from. And two, he would be benefiting from more of the open ditch than he's currently paying for. So that's, that's the adjustments that I feel are necessary to go forward with this.
I don't think they are. It's, it's a private tile.
When they, when they do a classification, it's based on the, on the county tile that's there and how much you're using of the open ditch from the, from the county, it doesn't take, it doesn't take into consideration any private tile that you put into a ditch, it's only the county tile that's, the amount of the county, where the kind of county tile drops in and how much that county tile is on your land and how far you are from the net, it doesn't, it doesn't assess you on your private tile.
But they take into account where in the facility that your water enters, so.
No, only on the county tile, not your private tile, is that true, Marge?
Um, it would be where your benefit is.
Uh, based on the county tile, not your private tile.
But where your benefit is to the open ditch.
It's, it's for everything, it's, it's a standard set of criteria that applies to everything in the district facilities. The ditches are facilities, the tiles are facilities, it's all district facilities.
But Marge, it doesn't, you, it doesn't, it's not based on your private tile down there.
No, all these acres are already annexed in to the open ditch.
It's based on your land relative to the open ditch and relative to the county tile, but not your private, it doesn't, they don't assess, they don't take into account your private tile.
No.
Let's just do a vote on it and we gotta get done by noon, we have another meeting.
Okay, do you want me to read the motion?
Yeah, do we have any issues going forward with approving this?
Don't know.
My, my issue is the scheduled benefits. I don't have an issue with the private tiling, it's how the benefits are calculated.
How far is the tile?
Quarter mile, half mile maybe, quarter mile?
I've been looking for that.
Um.
I did look at it earlier.
Yeah, it's in that folder.
It's under the folder, I think, the second one.
Read where you're heading.
Okay, okay.
Maybe just short of a quarter mile.
Quarter mile, okay.
Let's do a roll call vote and get it over with, you can vote it no if you want to.
Flah?
So this is to allow?
To allow.
Yes.
Nath?
I ask your question before the vote. Is this by, by approving it, are we, are we not going about it correctly as we should, or no? I mean, that's, that's what I'm asking, I don't, I don't wanna approve something that comes back to bite us.
Um, it's within the scope of it.
It's okay.
Because these are being the.
Sure.
It's already in the drainage district. You guys are running private tile in the ditch.
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Stucker?
No.
Jerks?
Yes, four to one. We have a decision on PK one, main tile repairs, it's in your folder, it's.
Yeah, there's a claim.
For five thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents between Palo Alto County and how much is in Kasuth minimum?
We are the control county, but it's all done in, um, so we're control county and then.
Yeah.
Does everybody understand? Do I have a motion to approve the payout for?
I would make a motion to approve the claim.
Who did?
Carter.
Carter. Motion and a second. Do I have any objections or any comments? Hearing none, do, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Decision for payout, six, on DD four. We have that in our folder today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, somewhere. Does anybody have any questions on payout? Six.
Uh, if there's no questions, I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Stucker and Carter? Or Wacter, I thought it was Carter. You two sound alike. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Anything else, Marge, on drainage? No requests?
Signee?
Three times? Anything else you wanna do before we go in? That you think's gonna take less than nine minutes?
We're gonna have to call Doug up.
Can we do it in nine minutes or should we do it afterwards?
That's up to you.
Afterwards.
We've got the um union for engineers, roadside weed spraying, right away discussion, all that, yeah, I don't.
We got health, Mar, well, Mar, discussion.
That's at one.
Yeah, I don't think we have, I don't think we can get that done in nine minutes.
Do we need Doug to approve the engineer contract and?
We'll do that after.
Yeah, okay.
We'll probably have to do that after health insurance too.
Okay.
I mean. We'll have a conference board.
I'll have to, you want the other meeting, vote on a couple things in the back?
Oh, yeah.
For mental health.
Oh.
At one forty-five.
Yeah, you can probably just step back in the break room for a couple minutes or whatever.
I gotta leave my twenty-two, I got my annual physical out, like I said, a month and a half ago.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna think we're gonna take a five minute recess and start it then?
What?
Are you sitting on the conference board? Are you gonna, are you recording now?
No.
Okay, can I hook this up here and get to the floor? Okay.
Um, we're gonna continue the board moving right after.
After this?
Yes.
We need to hook up to the owl and the projector first, we can switch.